Meeting to order. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Here.
He's absent.
Excuse.
Gardner?
Here.
Leo?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Stanton?
Here.
Trustor?
Haven't heard anything. All right. I'm not aware of any agenda changes, so we'll jump right into it. We've got Dr. Tim Travis hiding behind the podium. Come on up, Dr. Travis. I know you sent us your presentation and a video, which I had a chance to watch. It's very cool, so we'll turn it over to you, sir.
Really appreciate the opportunity. We haven't traditionally done this a lot, but I think it's probably a good idea. I've had an opportunity to speak to Douglas City Council, Lake Town Township. I've got the Rotary Club coming up this summer. I think Lake or Sagatuck Township is August. They seem to be really busy. Can't get me until August, but I really appreciate the opportunity just to kind of share how the schools are doing. We got a lot going on. It's been a weird two years where it's just kind of quiet. And so as we sort of emerge, I just wanted to make sure that city officials kind of got from the horse's mouth what's going on and share presentations. So I have just a short slideshow. I'm going to talk really fast because this I could take up a big chunk of your meeting. Because there is a lot of great things to talk about, and I love talking about it. So next slide. So basically, just to review the mission, vision, values, and goals. So this mission statement and vision statement to prepare students for life and support every child is about 20 years old now. This all happened right before I became the principal at Sagatuck Middle School and High School. And then, of course, our values, valuing individuals' integrity, excellence, and our community. It's a great place to live. It's a great place to have a school. And then the goals that kind of guide us are personalized education, a culture conducive to learning, excellence in offerings and delivery, and then, of course, keeping the district financially viable. The reason I bring this up is because it's been great guiding principles. I don't think they're going to change a lot, but the board will be engaging in a new five-year strategic plan this summer. You'll all be invited to participate in surveys, community forums, and those kind of things as we kind of map out where the school's going to head in the next five years. Next, what I have to report on today is pretty, pretty brief celebrations, things that we're really proud of, a little bit on our pandemic response, overall view of academic performance and finances, update on our facilities, and then again, an invitation to join us for some strategic planning, probably early fall. So the celebrations, I have a lot of links too. So if you have the presentation, you can go to the links. I'm not going to do that during the presentation, but you probably have heard that Douglas Elementary School was named the National Blue Ribbon School. To get an idea of how rare that that is, there were 13 schools in the whole state of Michigan this year that earned that distinction. There were only 324 maybe in the whole country. So it's a pretty rare thing. It's a great thing to celebrate. It just speaks to quality of education, our teachers, our parents, and then the kids did all the work. So it really is, it's a pretty cool thing. And once you're a blue ribbon school, you're always a blue ribbon school. So some of the new branding and with the new building, you'll see a nice, there'll be some nice national blue ribbon seals on things that will help everyone that visits the community understand. And then, of course, everyone who sends their kids to school here. Also, right along with this, this is the first year that elementary schools and middle schools were ranked by U.S. News and World Report. And when you take a look at those reports, Douglas Elementary School's in the top 5% of all elementary schools in the state of Michigan. The middle school's around in the top 11. And the next slide, the high school, for almost a decade now, I believe eight out of the last nine years is one of America's best high schools. So it really is a quality school system from preschool through grade 12. A little bit on our pandemic response. One of the things we're really proud of is other than days that we had to be closed in a couple of days that first year, first fall, around Thanksgiving to Christmas, our, our children have been in school face-to-face every day, and I think it's made a huge difference for them. It's made a huge difference for our parents and for our community. And I really personally, I don't know how larger school districts around the country had kids trying to learn remotely for that extended period of time because, just to be honest, it doesn't work very well, especially for younger kids. Works good for some kids, but we were just, I mean, our staff did a great job. And so as part of that, we've hosted multiple vaccine clinics for the community. We tested our faculty. We've tested staff, bus drivers, students. We have a relatively high vaccination rate, which has been helpful. This is a little bit outdated. The contact tracing, I think we're up to about 140 cases now this year, which is about four times the previous year, which was the year we all thought was terrible. This year really provided, you know, it kind of was like surprise challenges. We entered the school, you're thinking, oh, good, we're done. And it actually has been a lot more difficult, a lot more challenging. And then our federal funds, I think this is important because communities have these funds. So we had our, our ESSER funds are primarily allocated to additional student support. So it's additional social workers, counselors, paraprofessionals, some elementary teachers that have helped lower class size. Altogether, we got about $800,000 in ESSER funds, and we've chosen to spread that over three school years. So to put into perspective, $300,000 is about 3% of our budget. And so you know inflation is what, running six or eight right now? So to put in perspective, the money that we got from the federal government doesn't cover the cost of inflation this year. So I just want everybody to know, it seems like a pretty good chunk of money compared to a lot of districts. It's not a lot, but it's, it's useful. And what we spent it on was to add extra people so that we could have more adults helping kids during face-to-face instruction. A graduation rate, this one's a little hard to read. You can see that it has three graduation rates. Most people are interested in the four-year graduation rate. Most years, as you look at those, it's about 95 or 96%. So if there's 60 or 70 kids in a graduating class, there are usually one or two that don't graduate in four years. But there are also five-year cohorts and six-year cohorts, and you can see that we had a little dip during the pandemic in the four-year rate, climbing up a little bit with the five-year rate because some kids got into some alternative ed programs. But you can see that the six-year rate all the way across, one way or another, almost every kid that goes to Sagatuck High School graduates somehow. Most of them in four years with us, but some of them in other locations following us. So they're at least in the ballgame. Overall academic performance, this is a really cool graph. You can find this on my school data. It's available to everyone in the world, any parent that wants to look it up. It's through the state of Michigan. Green is going to be Sagatuck Public Schools. So the first one is Douglas Elementary. The sort of purple are similar schools. So what Michigan does is they take the 30 schools that are the most like Douglas Elementary School. So it would have similar size, similar student demographics, similar economic status. And then you got the state of Michigan in general. And so if you take all students, all subjects, we have pre-pandemic in the bottom, then there was no data. We have first year of the pandemic, and then students are just finishing up the tests this year, so we don't have this year's data. You can see that the relative standing is still pretty much the same. Douglas Elementary School outperforms schools that are like us by a pretty good margin, and that's true pretty much every year. And then by the state of Michigan, it's usually 20 or 30% above the passing rates for the state as a whole. And you can see everybody slid a little bit, and that's not coincidence. You're going to see that in the middle school. You're going to see it in the high school. And so we're working really hard to kind of catch kids up a little bit. So the middle school, I don't need to say much else. You can kind of just, just take a look. It almost looks exactly the same. Overall, good results compared to schools our size in the state overall, but a little bit of a dip. And we'll see, we have a sneak peek of our scores, and they're not publicly available, and I'm not supposed to talk about them, but I know that they're pretty good. So we're looking okay this year. And this would be the high school. And you can see that a couple of years ago, high school students just knocked it out of the park. And then, then a couple of years later, still doing well, but yeah, that, that 18, 19 class, that's just unbelievable, really. Next slide, a little bit of financial facts. Our general fund budget now is about 10.7 million. Our projected fund balance is about 15%, which is up about 5% from what it has been the last few years, and I'll talk about that a little bit. You can see our current per pupil allowance, which is nearly the same as all other schools in Michigan now. And so one of the things I think is really important for the council to understand and for taxpayers to understand is we believe that next year, we will probably have the same foundation allowance as every other Michigan high school. Everybody caught up, so we won't be out of formula anymore. And so we won't have hold harmless millages and things like that because we won't be above. And the great thing for us, so it's good for taxpayers, the second thing is good for the school is we won't get half the foundation allowance increase every year. And I'll show you a slide in a minute to show really how challenging it's been for a few years. Our blended enrollment this year is 845 students. We actually gained quite a few students this year at the start of the year, and then there are 88 graduates. It's one of the largest classes. Sagatuck High School history, and we have some alumni, so I'm not sure. It was probably
32.
30, yeah. Yeah, that was a pretty good-sized class. Yeah. Here's the enrollment history. So it has bounced up and down a little bit. And again, you know, between 843, 845, 850. With that large class going out, kind of depend on what the kindergarten class looks like. We'll probably have a drop in enrollment a little bit because that's a really big class for us leaving. Our revenues, the green is local. You can see that that is staying pretty stable. This community generates most of the money that's needed to run their school, sends it to Lansing. They divide it up, send it back to us with that per pupil allowance. And so there's what the state puts in, and then federal funding. Again, did go up a little bit this year with some of the ESSER funds. Our expenses, I just call your attention to this, and this is no surprises. If you take the blue piece of pie and the orange piece of pie, that's salary and benefits. And that's where most of the money goes, which is where it should go. And then there are other smaller buckets for things like supplies and repairs and some purchase services. We purchase lawn, lawn care services. We actually contract out with our business services. So that's where those purchases services comes in. This is what I really think everyone should understand is because of being an out-of-formula school district way back in 2009, 10, Sagatuck Public Schools got $8,520 per student. And then you can see we had the crash, and you can see that we didn't get back to that amount until 2019, 20. And every one of those 10 years, when everyone got $200 per student as a, as a bump the next year for inflation, or $300 for student, Sagatuck got half as much. And so as inflation went up, the same for everybody, we had half as much of an increase to work with. So it really was kind of tight for a while. So the fund balance dipped a little bit, but again, now we've got it back up to 15%. And I think, you know, good news for all of us is the current school aid fund. The economy, you know, until right now, we'll see how it goes, did really well, like all of the revenue estimating in the state as of May is outpacing estimates. And so we should be able to get a reasonable foundation allowance increase. One of the things that also is interesting is the projections for inflation and things like that is about, it might take about a $500 per student increase to keep up with inflation for next year, and that's about what we're hoping to get. Debt millage comparison. So we passed $35.6 million bond. Lot of great work going on right now. It's going to be fantastic improvements to our schools. And again, I think positive news here is Sagatuck's, our debt millage and our building site sinking fund total is 3.94 mils, which is still the lowest in any school district in the ISD or anyone else around us. So we're trying to do the best we can with what we have. And again, the property wealth in the district certainly helps us to be able to do that. But I think it's worth noting that we're still keeping the, the overall property tax millages as low as we can and getting a lot of good done. Here's a quick, this is an older video because the school changes so much, but I wanted to give a little bit of a look at what Douglas Elementary School looks like, that I have a few updated pictures. It looks nothing like that right now. I just, I'm waiting for it to get more completed so that it's kind of a little more, so that it looks a little nicer when I make the next video. A couple of things about the improvements, and so all of our schools will have fire protection sprinkling throughout. You saw a little bit of the beginning of secure entrance. The elementary school's never had a camera system, and now it has cameras inside and out for security. The clocks that you saw are actually emergency alert displays, so it actually is the, the PA system. But if there's an emergency situation like a fire, it will, it will have messaging that says fire, or if it was a tornado. Those things will be in the hallways and in the classrooms. The doors themselves, a security update is, is a lower elementary school, they have magnetic classroom door holds so that they close with a flick of a button and then are locked. And then they all, the whole district will have thumb turn locks. And so instead of having to go outside a classroom and use a key, it just has, you can use a key to lock from the outside, but it has a thumb term on the inside. So locking a classroom is this easy. And then it has an indicator, letting everyone on the outside and inside know whether the door's locked or unlocked. So just quick, easy things to do. Also, it's just, I know it's interesting how, how things turn out. So planned all of this pre-pandemic, and then we've got two years of where heating and ventilation and air and space are really important. And so the new HVAC system exchanges air many times more frequently than the current system. It has bipolar ionization. So I know the brewing company has that in their building. I've seen a few presentations, and basically just, it's like a bug zapper for germs. And so we hope to have much cleaner air in our schools. And so even in a non-pandemic, should be less sickness, better attendance, teachers able to, to be able to stay in school longer. You saw a little sneak peek of the, the restrooms in the lower elementary school that used to be non-ADA compliant out in the hallways in 1957 awful. They're, they're great new little kids. It's just much more user-friendly. We will have all new LED lighting and lighting controls. And then the whole elementary school soon will have a whole, all of the roofing will be doing, most of the roofing at the middle school and high school will be new, except some that still has about 10 years of life on it. So here's some updated pictures. This is what it actually sort of looks like now, although it looks nicer than this today, too. Those are the lower elementary classrooms, and that's the, the front door, the front entrance. This is the outdoor classroom in the back. And so those, that science room and art room have doors that go right out to the outdoor classroom. So on a nice day, any day, it's really cool. And then all elements of nature-based play, there's a sand river and a pavilion and rocks to climb on, and the playground is the same way. This is what the, this is still not even anywhere near where this looks. This is a couple of weeks ago. But that is the upper learning commons, all kinds of natural light, even on cloudy days, you hardly need the lights on. Just feels so much better than the dark dingy that really schools had back in the day. This is the lower learning commons. This would be like for the little, little ones. And then we have one for the older kids, and then we have a volunteer room as well so that our reading volunteers have a place to hang coats, get a cup of coffee, and then spread throughout the building to, to help kids in the lift program and help with reading. And, and so this is some of the new furniture. This is actually more what the cafeteria looks like today. Some of the new furniture. And the next slide, this is some of the new furniture. The chairs still aren't in yet. Those are the new student desks in the lower L. A lot of the furniture you saw in the video is old furniture, and it's all being replaced on June 14th. We found a company that will donate that to schools in need, whether in the United States or in South America, Africa. Every stick of furniture that, that we have to round up that we're going to move on, instead of putting it in a landfill, we're putting in a shipping container. And it's, it's heading out, and then the new furniture will be in about midsummer, and we'll house it, get it together, and then get it put in to all the classrooms before school year starts. And then, of course, if you've been to the high school at all, and I also gave Ryan a heads up, little less parking this summer, just so you know. They've already got the sanitary sewer in, in the storm drain underneath the new band room and central office wing. And they've got the foundations poured, I think they're laying black next week. You'll start to see the walls go up. The steel came in, which is awesome because supply chain challenges are real. So got to give a shout out to GMB and GDK Construction, who have really worked the supply chain. So you'll notice we have shipping containers that contain things like Univents that were bought a couple of years ahead of time because we don't want to not be able to get them and not be able to use the school when the time comes. So they have done a great job managing this. And then I've got a couple, couple of things just at the end, I think. Next slide. Oh, I got a few. This is what it's planned to look like. And so here's what's to come. That's the front of the high school. That would be the reception in the high school office. That's what the learning commons looks like. So again, it's a lot like the elementary. It's all open to the outside, a lot of light, little study carols. This is an innovation lab, so a lot of electricity, flexible furniture, kind of a place for kids to tinker. This is what used to be the teacher's lounge and a storeroom. It kind of is back-to-back of the old band room. And so that's going to be a large group instruction area, so we could take tests in there. We could have yoga classes in there. We can just take a classroom down that needs extra space. Kids need to work. Someone in the community needs a place to have a meeting. And that also though opens into the cafeteria so that if we have large classes like we just had, and we have more students, we've got room for everybody. And when we don't need it, there are class, class walls. This is the cafeteria. I mean, if you're familiar with the building, you'll notice that if that, what you're looking out those back windows looks over the ravine behind the school. Currently is an old stage and a black wall, so it's going to look beautiful. That's what it'll look like from the, the back. We're going to take the old band room and make it the new strength facility. And so that'll have some views out the back as well, give us more space. Where the weight room is now will be more of a turf area so that you can do plyometrics, and you can do different exercises up there. And then it's seen just a little bit of sort of an outdoor space that kids can use at lunch as well. So they got a little indoor/outdoor dining, just like we do in town. This is what's being built right now. This is the band room. The band room has a small group instruction room, so it could be like the jazz band could be in one part. The band is in the other part, and then it's got the instrument storage, practice rooms, Mr. Holt's office. I hope we get to call it Mr. Holt's office.
Yeah.
Like that dude, it needs someday. I just don't want to stay forever. Someday, we just put the Mr. Holt's band, because the guy's incredible. And here's a little bit of a look at what it looks like. Again, very similar in both buildings, just that the outdoors in.
That's been a long time coming.
Oh, yeah.
It was terrible.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just a couple of last things. This is, I mean, just really some, some great work for the last basically two years. So the elementary school's on time and on budget. We'll probably have a little bit of contingency to move to the high school. Construction bids we hit, I think, right early January this year, got everything that we wanted. I was totally surprised. There were other districts in Michigan that did about the same time that ended up having to cut a third of their store because it's just not coming in. We got some, some good bids. Bond sales have been good. I believe our second bond sale was the day that Russia invaded Ukraine. It was going to do, but it turned out okay. We had a negotiated sale. Good news is that overall, the two bond sales that we've had have saved about $7 million in projected interest pre-bonds. So the markets were good both times we went out. Douglas Elementary School will be mostly completed by the time school starts this, this summer. Four classrooms remain at the workout in the fall into Christmas break, and hopefully everything done to start 2023. And then we kind of do it all over again at the middle school and high school. It's going to take a couple more years. It'll be the fall of 2025 until it's all completed. The last part to get done is that weight room cafeteria. The heart of the, the building where the, the offices, those interior classrooms in the library media center will start about February, and we'll go a good just like, it's amazing. They just opened it up to the sky. And it's going to just look like, it'll look like a construction zone, and they build all the temporary walls around it. And then you get to take a look six months later. It's like, oh wow. And again, thanks for the opportunity and look for some surveys, and we'll certainly get you involved in taking a look at what's at education side of our public schools, where we should be headed in the next five years.
That's great.
Questions? I know I went along.
It's all good.
Council, questions?
All right. Russ Gardner, class of 79, and I have a daughter who's going to be the class of 2024, Charlotte Gardner. So perhaps you've seen her or met her. Very proud of what you showed us today. I'm very, very pleased. Thank you for being here. Two things that, nothing to really, just from my experience, the COVID communication throughout the past few years has just been great. And I know sometimes you can kind of see that here I am reporting this again, but I felt as though it was done extremely well in a period of completely unprecedented times.
Was it impressive? I've never experienced that in my life.
No, and, and thank you.
Thankfully, it was an alert.
Yeah.
And then the other point is the enrollment as well as anybody that follows the news, public school enrollment have been dropping precipitously in many areas. And so we should be very proud that we're able to attract students and families to our schools.
Holding their own, attracting some students. And we have had some attrition, too. I mean, it's, it's balance. And that, that's a good point, really unfortunate. Like there are a lot of, as a result of the pandemic and homeschooling and just a lot of kids didn't come back out of it. It's like, I just can't do this anymore, and I would rather do different, which I don't think is better, but it's, it's what they're choosing for different. So you're on point there. We've had a fairly large number take that route, and then we've had a fairly large number choose to come here. So we're hoping, I mean, as, as West Michigan prospers, we're hoping to continue to be part of that. I think another thing that, that happened a little bit, well, I know happened is people that have cottages here lately, their permanent residence for a period, some stayed, some stayed for a year and said, okay, thanks, we're going to go back to, to our city. The other thing I'm hearing is, which is mind-boggling to me, but, and I have some relatives in California, so real estate prices out there. When I went to visit and talked to them, I go, okay, this makes sense to me. And they're like, people from California and the East Coast come here and think this is a bargain. I'm getting out of the city, but it's not Chicago anymore. It's, it's the coast. And then of course, our whole community continue to work on places where it's more affordable for teachers to work and have their families here. I mean, that's a, a tough thing. Most of our teachers don't live here. And then, you know, our kids don't go to school here. And I know you're aware, we're all aware, it's a challenge for resort communities, it's a challenge all the way around, but I know everybody's working on it. And I think the schools play a, a good part of that and hopefully to attract employees. I know it's, it's unprecedented for everyone in town too. Our kids are very fortunate, the ones that want a job, get a job, which isn't true in a lot of small towns. And that, that's the thing people don't notice, you know, in the summer our kids run. They have some skills. Beyond math and science, they, they have a lot of interpersonal skills. And I think that's part of the great thing about this community too and their parents. It all works together. So thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity. I'll, if it's acceptable, I'll try to do this maybe yearly because I
That'd be great.
I don't know why we never have.
Yeah, I, I just want to commend you again for the work that you, that you, that you all did over the pandemic. And to do this renovation and come in on time, on budget is, you know, it's some wonderful stewardship. So I, I know that everyone worked hard on the bond and getting this plan in place, and I hope that you will make this a regular visit.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And we're going to have an open house at the elementary probably second week of September in there, let everybody settle a little. And by then almost everything will be done and we can start letting people get it better than my homemade video. I'll get another one this summer. But it, it really is going to be a fantastic learning facility.
Great. We are partners in the community.
If, if you all don't mind, I should have probably caught this change earlier. Moving on, well, we're at public comments, so let's do that first. Anybody on that would like to make some public comments? See anybody? All right, so under discussion items, if you all don't mind, I'm going to move the chief up to A since he's here and he's been patiently waiting. So we'll have Chief Janik and then we'll move to that resident request afterwards. Everybody okay with that? Good? All right.
Hello, council, I'm Greg Janik, I live at three two zero eight Silver Acres Drive, Sagittarius Township. Thank you for allowing me to be here to share our budget with you. Realize you'll be voting on it Monday night, but I certainly wanted to express my appreciation for the time to share with you the, the budget. So as most of you know, the budget consists of a levy against the real property taxes of two point two zero mils. So we, that will remain the same. That's the really the good news. There is no real bad news. So, you know, I want to just kind of give you an example, literally what defines the community and the great firefighters that we have. So we have somebody at the department around the clock. We have one person full time at night and then three to five paid on call firefighters. So just to give you an illustration, they spend the night there, they're there from four thirty in the afternoon until six AM and they get four dollars and fourteen cents an hour for, for that. On weekends, Friday night, Saturday and Sunday, that's what they get per hour. If they do a call, they'll get twenty-three dollars for the call. There's no calls. They don't get any more money other than the four dollars and fourteen cents an hour. So obviously, like a lot of people in this town, especially like the council, this isn't about the money for a lot of people. This is a career for, for me, I'm very fortunate, it's the best job in the world. But we also spend a lot of time working after hours and working at night. That's what it takes. So I think it just exemplifies what kind of residents we have and neighbors that they'll spend time because sometimes, you know, you just don't have enough calls. You may not have anything for a couple of days, then all of a sudden it's three or four calls a night. So I just wanted to share that with you. You're all fully aware of how costs have increased. Inflation has had an impact on all of us. In the photo, oh, you guys want a car? So the truck we ordered to replace this, as you know, we have a capital improvement plan. We never had one for the first forty-two years of the fire department. So everything has a life expectancy and the fire department is, is no exception. So we ordered an engine that was within there and I ordered that December twentieth of two thousand twenty. There it is, right there. It's built in South Haven at Spencer's. So the cab and chassis came in two months ago. And if I locked in the price by the end of December of two thousand twenty, the price was firmed up on the cab and the chassis and the engine. So the cabin chassis comes and I get a bill for a surcharge of five thousand eight hundred dollars. That's what's happening. Not even in the contract. Well, how do you explain that to taxpayers? So we had to work that out. So those are the things that we're, we're seeing now with, you don't know when anything's going to get delivered. I know Parton just ordered an engine similar to this and it was nine hundred thousand. The one you're looking at was about six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So gives you an idea what administrators, including yourselves, are going through with budget planning and fiscal management. Strategic planning wise, we're working on two things, accommodations for the people that, we don't have the pool of candidates within the area. So we've got a couple of firefighters from Layton, Bloomingdale, Grand Rapids that are out of the area that stay at the station. And our accommodations aren't, aren't the greatest. So we're working with our architect to see what we can do. Secondly is the staggering time delays on advanced life support ALS. So we are seriously considering and we're investigating now basic life support. Where if there's no ALS, we'll transport people to the hospital rather than waiting forty or forty-five minutes. So that is kind of what's on the horizon, what we're working on. Training is a big emphasis at the department. Every Monday, every Saturday, we're training and then online once a month and in person once a month. So it's very active on training. So you have expenses, the line items, revenues right there, you can see, and I'm not going to go through it line by line unless somebody has a question on it. Happy to try to answer anything if I can answer. I'm sure Peter can, can help me out. And this just shows you what we're getting from each municipality, the cost recovery. You never know what you're going to get, be able to recover. Grants are fiercely competitive. I think everyone in this room knows that, realizes that. So just the revenue sheet is before you and then appropriations expenses are in the next couple of pages.
Chief, can I ask you a question? So just looking across the years, oh, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty, we had, we were at the same level? Well, no, that's amended and activity and projected. So we're at three eighty-nine for this year. Forty-nine. So you have twenty twenty-one activity, three sixty-four, seven seventy-nine, fifty-five. And then bumped up to three eighty-nine, thirty-eight, eighty-seven.
Yep, right here.
And then your requested budget, four fifteen. I, I'm curious why.
Projected property values.
So from the, okay.
That's where that comes from.
Fire Department's military rate is not affected by that.
Okay.
Most, most other militaries have to have a rollback. Department's military rate is not in space. The fire board has the authority to actually let me all go up to ten mils.
Okay.
Special assessment of police suppliers, they love two point two mils. So that's the difference of having a heavily roll back for the city's outbreak is, doesn't have to deal with a rollback with the fire department. But it's still on the same military rate, just there's an increase, I think it's like three point three percent is the inflationary CPI. If you didn't have change ownership of your property, it goes from last year, this current tax will drive it to three point three percent increase.
Okay, okay.
I think it's a little over a hundred thousand dollars more than the fire department.
Based on taxes. Okay.
Any other questions that, that you might have at this time?
On revenues or just in general?
Anything in general, anything at all.
Anybody else? Cause I've got a few.
If something does surface between now and Monday night, please call me.
Well, chief, I've got, I've got a couple of questions. So I'm looking at your appropriations and seeing quite a few increases down the line. Education, medical supply, community risk reduction, physicals, general insurance, truck payment quite a bit. So I'm just curious about those.
The truck payment, if I may comment on that, can I comment on that? That four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, we're not getting a loan for the truck. That's the payment when the truck is built, I think July first, that's what that payment is.
Okay.
Four seventeen.
All right, and up to the other stuff, just education?
Education. So we increased this with the premise that everything is costing us more, instructors are costing us more, travel costs are costing more. We, we have a guy in staffing and command school right now for eleven months. And, you know, what was once, you know, twenty-three hundred dollars now is thirty-six hundred dollars. So there's medical supply, we used to pay nineteen dollars for a box of gloves, they're now thirty-three dollars. So we're experiencing these sharp increases in some of the goods that we use. That also depends on the cycle, like for example, if we get a five-year span where the field laptops have to be replaced, then we'll bump that up. We went with a truck program to record the maintenance and keep track of that. That was put in, in the budget as well, was a twenty-five hundred dollar program.
Well, we're going through this ourselves with the city and Peter's presented us with quite a bit more information in detail. And so that's, that's honestly what I'm really kind of used to seeing. And that's actually what I would prefer is that type of detail that we see with the city budget since we're giving quite a bit of money. I'd like to really be able to see all the details in, in the budget.
The details on the expenses?
Yeah, so Peter takes us through literally everything. And that's, that's literally what I would like to see for the fire department as well. And if that means sitting down with Peter and having him take us through that. Yeah, so that, that would mean that we would probably in the next week or two, probably schedule time to go through that as well. I think it's just good for us to be aware, chief, what's in there.
We share that every month.
Yeah, well, we, we need to be aware. It's a good educational process for us, just for the city and then beyond that. We'll do the same with interurban. I would request the same wherever any of our money is going to. And we're being requested, I have that same request, that we get a good education on that before we approve it. That's my request.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, thanks for being here today, appreciate it. So back to the truck purchase itself. So if I'm understanding the math correctly, that the, this is not going to be financed. It's you, you've set aside the money to bail pay for it, cash payment. So the two sixteen, four seventeen from the projected activity for twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three, those two together equal your purchase cost, basically. Is that correct?
Yeah, the cab and chassis, we paid the two sixty in this current year and then the remaining balance for all the gas. There's another four seventeen.
Try to avoid getting a loan, so try to budget for that.
Totally appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And probably something else from the fire department, relax. For fiscal years, I know they probably roll over you on what they've done and they've been trying to roll north of a hundred thousand dollars a year. So there's this positionality. When a six hundred thousand dollar truck comes around that we have to cash, they don't have to. Jump to the legal, you go to the bank or somewhere to file the money and have a payment. So yeah, the budget hasn't been restored here, but you know, they did a whole, so we got a million dollars on balance now, but after a year from now, reality of that truck is probably going to be under half a couple of dollars.
The capital improvement plan, and I know I, I can't make this any bigger, so I'm sorry. The capital improvement plan will show you, for example, air packs. When I became chief in two thousand thirteen, our air packs were due next year, their ten-year life expectancy. So I went to the board and said, I need two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to replace the air packs. And there was no funding for them. Zero. And I worked to change that. So you can see we were at a deficit and the capital improvement plan shows life expectancy of engines, thermal imagers, I mean, even tires are in there, there's seven years on tires, whether they have five hundred miles on them or not. So that's the challenge that we have in public safety. You'll see, I think on that mail order. This, this column right here, you'll see four items that are orange. Those were due in two thousand twenty-two. I postponed those expenditures. I think one is the Buell record. Buell is harder to read.
Trailer.
So I postponed those because I want my town to money for the engine. Just put them off. Next year and we'll reevaluate it.
All right. Chief, if you can give us a couple of weeks to get together with Peter's individuals and have us, have him take us through scheduling like we did for our city budget, that would be great.
Sure.
So Monday, we'll, we'll delay, we won't have it on the agenda Monday and we'll delay and give us a couple of weeks. End of May, beginning of June. Time wise, you don't have to have it approved until June, right? I think I saw that.
Right, June twenty for the public hearing, right?
Okay. Okay. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks. Greg.
All right. All right, next up, we have a dock purchase request.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you recall, we had a, a Ms. Michelle Solberg who owns a dock next to the pump house by Mount Baldhead. She made an ask of city council to purchase the dock that she's leasing because she thinks it needs some improvements or she and her family do. And the council took no action on that, but she's kind of looking for like a more definitive answer to her request. In my initial exchange with Ms. Solberg, you know, I, I let her know that most waterfront communities are not selling public land. They're in fact doing the opposite. They're trying to purchase private land to make it public. And I said, it's probably going to be a tough sell for the, for the council to, we're going to go through a visioning process for the Mount Baldhead parking area. Who knows how that public property may come into play? And three, if we were to sell it, we'd have to do a, a fair market analysis. So it's not as easy as the request. She doubled her offer, but anyways, I think she's just looking for a response from council one way or the other. So put this on the agenda for Monday and
And your suggestion is to deny it.
Yes.
Yeah. Does everybody understand that?
Yeah, and if I could add something, Garnett, I, I mentioned this to Ryan that at least from my experience, if you consider that, and I think it is part of a park, you can actually have to go to a public vote of the people before you can sell parkland.
Yeah.
So I think that's also something to, to keep in mind.
Yeah, I know we've got
It has to be, you know, research back, you know, until who knows how we acquired the property, et cetera. But I think it's pretty easy to determine that it's
Yeah, we, we had a similar, I guess, similar wouldn't be the, kind of initial request from the S E A about parking lots. You know, if, yeah, if we started selling off all our property, we wouldn't have any property left. So at some point in time, we just have to hold on to what we have.
Yeah.
Yeah. And do you agree?
I mean, we have to be good stewards of the assets that we have as a waterfront community and that is real business.
Very good. Next up, we have the special event, the SCA jump into summer is, we have we have somebody going to join us online. There she is. Hi there.
Hi there. I'm Megan Hodgson from the SCA. I'm sorry I can't be there in person today. And and this is my first time meeting with you, so I would welcome any guidance on what it is that would be most helpful for you to know today.
This is a similar request last year, right? Same event? Yeah. Okay. Questions from council?
Didn't Kristen present this one or touch base with us when she was here, I believe?
She might have mentioned this one, but I remember last year specifically because we were just coming out of the pandemic and it was a whole matter of how everything was going to flow, was still kind of being in a pandemic. So how was the, what type of attendance did you have last year?
They, so I was not working with them last year, but I was told they had approximately five hundred for the this part. The difference this year is that we have a Friday night event, and then this this permit is just for the Saturday part in Coughlin Park.
Okay.
And last year, everything was happening at once. So I think the numbers for the whole event were about twelve hundred, but about five hundred were in the park.
Sure. And and this event is, this event is strictly on the park property, right?
The Saturday portion, yes.
Got it. Okay. Any questions? It's pretty straightforward. Yeah.
It looks fun. I want to make a T-shirt.
I just saw the designs. They're awesome.
Timely. I just want to thank them for their timely application.
Yes, thank you. Very timely. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And learn more about composting.
Yes, very good. I know. Great.
Yeah, come join us, please.
All right, will do. Thank you. Thanks very much. I did want to have a discussion with you all. I looked through the approvals and so the elegant sheriff's fine, Scott's fine, and and the chief, too bad he's gone. They're happy to approve the event with concrete water or vehicular barrier protection.
This isn't a parade, per se.
Do they go on to say if not, they could park vehicles?
Uh, yes, or fire trucks for barrier protection.
Or onto your vehicles.
Yeah, yeah. Is this something that we would have the SCA follow up with them on then?
Yeah, as far as logistics go, that's up to them to kind of work out these details. That's kind of the application process.
I'm not understanding why we would want barricades or why we would want to sort of keep people. I don't, I guess I don't understand.
Yeah, that's why I wanted us to have a discussion about it. This keeps rearing its head. And that's why I asked her specifically if the event was on Coughlin Park property, and it is. It's not on the road. It's not on an intersection. I'd be inclined to Kristen, was her name Megan, that they would want to have a conversation and agree on what they want for barricades, if any. I I think they netted off anywhere, my understanding, so.
I'm I'm still here if there's something.
Yeah, yeah, hi, hi. So how do you usually, I know you guys, didn't you net it off? People had to come through a main area. Yeah, okay.
Yep, yep. We have a like flags that will mark off the territory with or the like the main area with.
Yeah.
And we'll wristband people when they come in because then their wristbands are used for other things.
Yeah.
We did ask for some reserved spots, and Kate had asked some questions about that. And those those spots will be filled with vehicles. They won't be empty.
Okay.
They, we just asked to reserve them so that, like, the the Fenville Bookmobile is coming. So we just want to make sure that there's space for them to park, for example. So none of those spaces will be left empty.
Okay, all right.
And Madam Mayor, those are the spaces in question when chief said.
Yes.
So they're going to do volunteer.
So in a way, you're creating your own vehicular barrier. That's, that's what.
To be something that we're going forward with events.
Perfect. All right. Thank you for hanging with us. You helped answer a question for me. All right. Very good. All right. Excellent. Okay, next up, special event, National Trails Day. Yeah, you gotta go. Yep, go for it. National Trails Day.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is on page sixty-two. It's a late coming request, but it's an easy one. So they do this like trails program.
Yeah.
And they just set up a couple of small booths, and I don't like the untimeliness of the application nor the staff. But we thought we just saw this one in the packet because it's so minimal.
Yeah, our our role in this basically is approval, right? They're taking care of all the because they're at the Woolham Trail and the Peterson Preserve Trail.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a small, it's a small table.
Yeah.
That they just need to set up for when somebody walks by that they have their card.
And this is the first year that they're doing.
Second, second year.
Yeah, they did it last year. They had a great turnout. I mean, they had a ton of people. It was, and the weather was great. It was really beautiful.
Yeah, great event, just.
It is.
Gotta encourage.
With Chris.
Untimely, yes.
When I see.
But we're gonna, we're accommodating the best.
When I see him, I'll I'll ask him, hey, hey, okay. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Looks cool. Excellent. Next up, interurban millage renewal for the August ballot. Mr. Manager.
Madam Mayor, we have some information on this on page seventy-one of your packet. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Yeah, and Madam Clerk, you said that Phyllis was going to try to join us Monday? Okay, so she'll be here Monday, so she can chat about it. Any questions?
Yeah, I look forward to seeing her.
Yeah, we haven't seen her. And it's, it's been a while. Yeah, okay. Garden Club banner request. I hear that one's very timely.
This is on page seventy-five of your packet. Happy to answer any questions. What a great group.
Yes, pretty straightforward.
Was that just the only thing that got me with the dates? I don't believe, have they done this before?
Yeah.
Did this?
Yeah.
I just wonder if there was some conflict with the Venetian banner.
There will be two signs up.
Yeah, they hang them one below the other, right?
For until to at least to the twenty-third to coincide with those. Beating banners, huh?
Okay. And we are, did we already approve Venetian? Do we already do that?
Venetian banner?
Yeah, I don't think so. We just approved the event.
It's a part of their application?
Was it? Okay, thanks for the reminder.
They had yard signs too, or signs in the street where the Venetian too.
Out of sight, out of mind.
And Madam Mayor, I I'm not sure when the city council had to start. The council themselves had to get involved with these types of applications for banners. Things that our staff are very capable of handling rather than coming in front of you and kind of consuming your time. So eventually, I'd like to see a process.
Straight of approvals. Yes, it's probably one of those can fall into that.
Yeah, I, you know, eventually, I'd like to see the council probably change the rule that banner signs and other kind of signage needs to come in.
I think, I think that's, that started when it was first new and being used, and they didn't, a lot of people still don't like it. I I'll get an email saying, I see more laundry hanging up on the pallets. So, um, but I think they were afraid that it would be ongoing completely, those pure, you know, they like the pallet sign. They think that's indicative of Sogatuck, so. I think that was the reason why we decided to bring it to council.
Do we have a written rule somewhere?
It's part of, yeah, it's a part of the ordinance.
Is it ours? Can we bring, bring it forward?
Of course, it can do. Well, it will.
Yeah. I don't know if it's a, you know. When you got several ordinance things to do, it's nice to keep those.
Clean up your agenda. I mean, it cleans up your agenda because these.
Yeah, if you have the designated area, staff is very capable of approving signage within certain parameters. So.
Okay.
Yeah, and I mean, I think we all understand the intention is not to have it look like a clothesline.
Yeah.
Yeah, keep it clean. Yeah.
Furdiness, sign. Next, next workshop, huh? Okay, very good. Fourth of July financial contribution.
So we don't have any information on this one for the packet. This will come up on Monday. I have to talk to Peter about what the historical contribution has been for the Fourth of July fireworks. But that's what we're talking about.
Yeah. We're limited to set amount, I think, that we can go.
I don't know why five thousand.
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, there's some state statutes that are pretty clear on what we can do and what we can't do on this one. So this will come up on Monday. We just wanted to get on the agenda.
And Peter will have that historical for us?
Yep.
It might be five. Fourth of July, it might be more for that.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember. I thought it was five, but I don't know. Household hazardous waste day banner request that's on here, I think Jim Sullivan got his like request in at the very last minute. It's impossible. We would approve it Monday, and it would go up on the events Tuesday. Makes no sense. So we had him put it down by the DPW. Is that what it is?
That's, well, that would be my recommendation. So another late coming request, which staff doesn't.
Well, this was so odd from Jim.
I really would like to see the DPW have a sign, an electric, electrical sign for things like that.
Yeah, because I know the chief has actually gotten a flashing sign from GAF, Ganges Fire Department, GAF, got one of the fire departments, and they're putting it out there. So it's flashing.
Or it could be for city.
Yeah, from a cost perspective, those things are expensive.
Plus it's in the township, so you're going to run into their their rules and regs.
Um, sorry.
So my recommendation on this one, giving the timing of things, would be to, if the remaining members of council are cool with it, to just have our DPW put up the sign at the DPW site as of like tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
And that's going to be out of the right of way, and it doesn't fall into your ordinances that you have to approve it. Because again, to your point, it'd be too late anyway. So we can, we can throw it up tomorrow at the DPW site, which kind of makes sense because that's where the hazardous waste day is going to be held anyway, so.
Yeah, yeah. I'm I'm good with that. Poor Jim. I I don't know how many know. He lost his son, and I don't know that he's he's still, I think, kind of adjusting. So, yeah, this is very unlike him.
Understandable.
Gets the stuff in quite fast, but.
No worries against staff. It's just trying to follow the city's ordinances while being practical at the same time. So this is the best solution that I have for you.
Not, not that I think it would be an issue, but out of, you know, again, that's in township property. It's not city property. I mean, the property is in the township.
Where the DPW is, but it's even though it's a city office?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be out of the right of way.
But I don't know what the rule, I'm just giving you a heads up. Maybe you want to give a shout out to your contemporary. Who's also, yeah, I I'm just saying.
I hear you.
I appreciate it. All it takes is one, somebody say, hey.
All right.
Right.
All right, okay. Along the household hazardous waste day, numbers are, we are at one eighty registered, and I sent out another FYI to people. So, you know, spread the word. I still entertain people just driving up. I didn't know I had to register, but. Oh, yeah, sure. It's all good. But so far, so good. So, okay. All right, public comments. I see we have a couple of people on. Anybody want to offer a public comment on anything? Please, if you want, raise your hand. All right, very good. A letter from Eric Gallenek regarding the sidewalk down on Water Street. Very nice. Council comments. Lauren, let me start with you.
Nothing at this time there.
All right.
Yeah.
Mr. Becken.
What's up?
All good? Okay.
Nothing at this time, man.
All right. Mr. Manager, happy anniversary.
Oh, thank you so much.
It's the day. God bless her.
Yeah, I know.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, on paper, please say yes. There we go, adjourn.